Carter Castor.
Here.
Gopher Potter.
Here.
Chairman Gilson.
Here.
David Holmes.
Here.
Roy Rito.
Here.
John Martino, that's excuse me. Brad O'Travel.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Ari Almanchesbrough.
Here.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Present.
Patrick Twist.
Here.
Stephen Walpole.
Here.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Strum.
Here.
Shane Braunwald, that's excuse me. That's about content.
Yeah.
Rashad.
Here.
Tim Stoll.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Karasik.
Here.
Morse Savela.
Here.
And five.
Here.
Frank Stitt.
Thank you. Education, please.
Will you please stand? As we come together today, let us be grateful for the opportunity to live in the great country and to serve our community, for the chance to make a difference in the lives of our loved ones and the citizens of Asuyo County, for the gift each day and the company of goods and decent people, and for the examples of courage and dedication developed each day. Amen. At this time, I'm going to ask a veteran that's in the audience to come up and lead us in the pledge, Mr. Greenleaf.
Would you please run me as we pledge our allegiance to this great country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I trust we've seen the minutes from the regular meeting on September 12th. Motion approved by legislature member, Senator. Multiple seconds. All in favor.
Aye.
Both. Terry, thank you. This time, we'd like to call Robert Ramsey, Sheriff's Department. And the public safety committee. So on behalf of the county legislature and the citizens of Asuyo County, we want to congratulate Robert J. Ramsey, Jr. on 25 years with Asuyo County. With Asuyo County and in his current role as Asuyo County Deputy. We really appreciate all the hard work you put in every day, day after day out there protecting our community. So thank you, and I know the sheriff has a few words he would like to share.
Again, I'd just like to congratulate you. It's been a big milestone, 25 years. A lot of hard work out there. I'm sure the citizens and the legislature appreciate all your efforts. Congratulations.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call the economic development committee to the board along with legislator Del Cantin for crackling the 4H.
The Asuyo County Legislature designated October 2019 Asuyo County 4-H Month, whereas Asuyo County's young people are our most cherished Asuyo County resource, and whereas cooperative extension with the support of Asuyo County Legislature serves the individual and group education needs of Asuyo County's rural and urban youth and 4H youth development programs. And whereas this year, over 11,000 Asuyo County youth are acquiring worthwhile life skills through the teachings of hundreds of 4H volunteers across the country. And whereas now, in this, the 98th year of 4H in Asuyo County and 118th year in New York State, their generations, literally tens of thousands of men and women who through 4H have pledged their lives to clear community thinking, greater community loyalty, larger community service, and better living in Asuyo County. Now therefore, we have resolved that I, James Wetherup, Chairman of the Asuyo County Legislature, on behalf of the entire legislature and the residents of Asuyo County, to hereby designate October 2019 as Asuyo County 4H Month and commend the efforts and forward cooperative extension of Asuyo County and the hundreds of 4H volunteers for the priceless contributions towards stronger, healthier, and happier lives in Asuyo County. James Wetherup, Chairman of the Legislature.
Thank you very much. I think I was asked to speak because I got close to those 98 years. Having grown up myself, I had participated in clubs early in the age of five. My mother ran a 4H club from the time before I was there, I think. And I now run that same club under the same name. I think the awareness that I grew up with was learning diverse life skills, not just focused on our equine activity, but public speaking, things that I carried through in both my professional and personal life later on. And now have brought my daughter, Emily, up to do the same thing.
I'm, I'm late. I've been doing 4H my whole life, being my mom's and my mother before I was born. I've been able to do many things, experience multiple things I never would have if I was in 4H. I have gone to state to compete in my horses since I've been ten, so seven years in a row. And something I look forward to every summer. I've also completed, first of all, done public presentation at the regional level, of course, at the state level and local. I've also met many people through 4H. I've met two of my best friends through 4H and have made several close friendships that I never probably would have if I was a part of it. I've also learned multiple life skills I will probably use throughout my whole life. I've become more, like a better leader in my community, in my school, and 4H. And my public speaking has gotten a lot better since I've been in there, especially. And I know how it's helped out my community in many household ways.
Forty-five minutes, yeah.
So, just real quickly, one of the things I would like to have you consider in this 98th year is the tens of thousands of youth that have been through the Asuyo County 4H program. Those kids have now grown up and are bringing their kids into the 4H program. It's a wonderful, wonderful program to teach kids that want to do good in their community, they want to be good citizens. 4H is mild, it's learned by doing. That's what we stress in the Asuyo County 4H program. We want these kids to be well-rounded people, to grow up and do good things. And it works, 4H works. And in closing, I just want to say what I've said in the past, we couldn't do it without the support of this legislature. We need your financial support, but we need you there in our programs. And we do have many legislators that come at various times, that come to participate in our programs, and show your face, and show support for the kids and what they're doing. And there is no price there, I mean. And so, we want you to know how much we appreciate that, and we thank you for the support that you give us year after year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the Health Committee forward, the representatives from the T-1D Asuyo County.
Asuyo County Legislature recognizes type 1 diabetes Asuyo County, whereas the T-1D Asuyo County Task Force was formed by parents, professionals, and health care leaders in Asuyo County with an interest in type 1 diabetes, and whereas the mission is to bring together the greater T-1D community while providing local opportunities to enact and support those living with type 1 diabetes or caring for a person with type 1 diabetes. And whereas, T-1D Asuyo County facilitates county residents coming together to share information, provide support, and build a local network by which all can access. And whereas, T-1D Asuyo County will host an inaugural event entitled Community Connections, followed by quarterly events in Asuyo County of interest, focused on living successfully with type 1 diabetes. Now therefore, I, James Wetherup, Chairman of the Asuyo County Legislature, and on behalf of the entire legislature, we hereby recognize type 1 diabetes Asuyo County and commend them for their service and collaborative efforts to improve lives, strengthen the T-1D community, provide such opportunities for strong connections, and support to all those living type 1 diabetes or caring for a person with type 1 diabetes. James Wetherup, Chairman of the Legislature.
So, if you've been in the Health Committee or the Human Concerns, you've already heard something about T-1D. It's an important group that establishes itself to reach out to other parents and caregivers that run into a lot of confusion and create a social network for information. I'll let them explain it in a second. But it's near and dear to my heart because I teach program for diabetes and often the question comes up about type 1, which is a whole other piece of it. It's a whole other nightmare that parents have to go through in constant struggle. I am going to encourage you not to add any more different things for October. Move a couple up until November, I'm going to have to use another calendar. Who's the spokesman?
Go ahead, George.
Just a couple seconds.
You're in luck. The blue ribbon is actually for November, so you can all put it, okay. I really would appreciate that if you all would support that ribbon to represent the kids and young adults in our community who do have type 1 diabetes. Currently, there's a little over a million in the United States. There are about 40,000 of those are children, 20 years old or younger, and 68 of them are in our county alone. Two of them are my own, and I know that we have some other parents that represent this group. As you've heard, we have a great diverse group of professionals from different organizations who are all representing these children and young adults with type 1 diabetes. And yes, it's a nightmare, but it is a nightmare that these kids can live it for their entire lives and really have a very healthy, vibrant, successful life as long as there are supports and things for them. And for me and for my husband, it's really, really an honor to be a part of this group because for about 12 to 15 years of our lives, we had to go outside Asuyo County for some support, some advice, just to talk to other parents who are going through the same place that we are. You know, our medical professionals obviously keep our kids alive and guide us, but there's nothing like talking to other parents and families and kids who are really experiencing some of the things that we live day to day, which is really what our November 60 minute is about. It's going to be a couple different panel discussions where you can really hear from a child, a young six-years-old, and what their struggles are, all the way up to grown adults who have lived with type 1 in their lives, to parents like myself, and everywhere in between. Because at every stage where a person with type 1 diabetes or for their loved ones caring for them, it's a different challenge. So we're really, really happy to be having this group, and hopefully you'll see some great things from us in the future.
So remember, next month. Again.
Next month, the blue ribbon.
This time, I'd like to call the Human Services Committee forward. Oh wait, especially honor to, to, to Ron Greenleaf forward.
Asuyo County Legislature recognizes Ronald Greenleaf, Asuyo County 2019 Veteran of the Year, whereas it is the intent of this legislative body to recognize members of the community that have made great sacrifices, significant contributions, have performed courageous acts, who have exemplified honorable traits that others aspire to achieve. And whereas, the Veteran of the Year embodies all those qualities which have been recognized through their service in our nation's military, in times of active conflict or in times of peace, and as honorable members of our own community. And whereas Ronald Greenleaf served his country with honor and distinction during his three years of active duty in the United States Navy, he received two Vietnam Service Medals, two Vietnam Campaign Medals, a combat action ribbon, and Presidential Unit Citation. Whereas electricians made third class, Greenleaf entered the US Navy on February 14th, 1967. He served 18 months in Vietnam aboard the USS Cartinet County. He was also assigned to various riverboats and swift boats. Whereas Mr. Greenleaf has distinguished himself by dedicating his time to community efforts such as raising funds for Fulton United Methodist Church, donating food that has been harvested from his land, and tending to veteran needs. Now therefore, we have resolved that I, James Wetherup, Chairman of the Asuyo County Legislature, on behalf of the entire legislature and the people of Asuyo County, to hereby recognize the 2019 Veteran of the Year, Ronald Greenleaf, for his honorable service in our military, his devotion to our nation, and for his contributions as an honored member of our community. James Wetherup, Chairman of the Legislature.
I'd like to thank the committees for the support of the community, but I was very humbled and very honored. The other seven veterans, they deserve to do so much better. Also here in Asuyo County, we have several veterans who serve our communities. Not asking for anything bad, but we would call it, you get back to your communities. I really appreciate the work that Jamie's done with the veterans in Fulton office, and she did a great job for the first time around, I thought, with my very well. And again, I thank everyone.
Thank you. Legislature Wilber, any publications or resolutions of the day?
There are none.
Moving on, reports of county officials. Reports of standing committees. Reports of special committees. Thank you. Moving right in then, the resolutions and motions. Resolution GC1 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution accepting Board of Elections' Early Voting Grant.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislature Castillo.
I'm just wondering if this grant is going to cover all of the early voting costs? Is it going to require any more? I mean, we have to do it now if I may ask.
I believe it is, and it's going to cover everything, that's a grant that covers at least the most of the, of the road and, 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 and.
All right, okay. Any other discussions? What I can discuss. Legislature Savela.
Yes, I've been down there, and the only place you could early vote is go to the office and say, it's all set up, very efficient, and that's where the early voting takes place. Because some people are confused, thinking they're on the other, but they won't. You gotta go to the Board of Elections.
I think that's statewide confusion.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Thank you. Resolution GC2 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Board of Elections' Reproduction Expenses.
Expenses of reproduction expenses for our schools, and it comes with a bonus of $3,500 for the expenses within their management.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Terry, thank you. Resolution GC3 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, County Clerk, Motor Vehicle Additional Hours.
Okay, this is a transfer of $6,818 from $1,900 within the sole budget. I think the motor vehicle is more efficient, your people in and out.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Terry, thank you. Resolution GC4, legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution accepting Local Government Records Management Improvement Fund Grant, County Clerk.
Yes, this is a local government management grant out of New York State. We'll receive something, $1,698, so we're going to implement the BCML system, and we receive $35,849 already, we just ran it away.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Terry, thank you. Resolution GC5 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Memorializing the intent of this legislature regarding the need to retain Interstate 81 and its tram route through Syracuse.
Yes, this is important with our neighboring counties and all the people commute through Syracuse and that area of putting that highway on the ground again, which causes grid lack and footers and open pipelines, designed to take care of that. It'll also be a more efficient for ambulance and stuff to get to the hospitals for the building.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
Did I just understand, are you favoring this, or?
Well, we haven't voted yet. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Two opposed.
Both. Now we're in favor. Thank you. Resolution PS1 by legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I approve the resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Sheriff's Office, Transfer from Other Supplies and Expenses, Corrections Division, to Overtime Payments for Road Division.
This resolution will transfer $95,000 from other equipment and supplies within the Sheriff's budget to the overtime to cover us today, hopefully the end of the year.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Terry, thank you. Resolution IT1 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I approve the filing resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Solid Waste, Eastern Equine, and Sepulveda's Grant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is our annual grant, accepting my, 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 Thank you.[474.83][474.83][S01. Thank you.[477.83][477.83][S01. Thank you.[480.83][480.83][S01. Thank you.[483.83][483.83][S01. Thank you.[486.83][486.83][S01. Thank you.[489.83][489.83][S01. Thank you.[492.83][492.83][S01. Thank you.[495.83][495.83][S01. Thank you.[498.83][498.83][S01. Thank you.[501.83][501.83][S01. Thank you.[504.83][504.83][S01. Thank you.[507.83][507.83][S01. Thank you.[510.83][510.83][S01. Thank you.[513.83][513.83][S01. Thank you.[516.83][516.83][S01. Thank you.[519.83][519.83][S01. Thank you.[522.83][522.83][S01. Thank you.[525.83][525.83][S01. Thank you.[528.83][528.83][S01. Thank you.[531.83][531.83][S01. Thank you.[534.83][534.83][S01. Thank you.[537.83][537.83][S01. Thank you.[540.83][540.83][S01. Thank you.[543.83][543.83][S01. Thank you.[546.83][546.83][S01. Thank you.[549.83][549.83][S01. Thank you.[552.83][552.83][S01. Thank you.[555.83][555.83][S01. Thank you.[558.83][558.83][S01. Thank you.[561.83][561.83][S01. Thank you.[564.83][564.83][S01. Thank you.[567.83][567.83][S01. Thank you.[570.83][570.83][S01. Thank you.[573.83][573.83][S01. Thank you.[576.83][576.83][S01. Thank you.[579.83][579.83][S01. Thank you.[582.83][582.83][S01. Thank you.[585.83][585.83][S01. Thank you.[588.83][588.83][S01. Thank you.[591.83][591.83][S01. Thank you.[594.83][594.83][S01. Thank you.[597.83][597.83][S01. Thank you.[600.83][600.83][S01. Thank you.[603.83][603.83][S01. Thank you.[606.83][606.83][S01. Thank you.[609.83][609.83][S01. Thank you.[612.83][612.83][S01. Thank you.[615.83][615.83][S01. Thank you.[618.83][618.83][S01. Thank you.[621.83][621.83][S01. Thank you.[624.83][624.83][S01. Thank you.[627.83][627.83][S01. Thank you.[630.83][630.83][S01. Thank you.[633.83][633.83][S01. Thank you.[636.83][636.83][S01. Thank you.[639.83][639.83][S01. Thank you.[642.83][642.83][S01. Thank you.[645.83][645.83][S01. Thank you.[648.83][648.83][S01. Thank you.[651.83][651.83][S01. Thank you.[654.83][654.83][S01. Thank you.[657.83][657.83][S01. Thank you.[660.83][660.83][S01. Thank you.[663.83][663.83][S01. Thank you.[666.83][666.83][S01. Thank you.[669.83][669.83][S01. Thank you.[672.83][672.83][S01. Thank you.[675.83][675.83][S01. Thank you.[678.83][678.83][S01. Thank you.[681.83][681.83][S01. Thank you.[684.83][684.83][S01. Thank you.[687.83][687.83][S01. Thank you.[690.83][690.83][S01. Thank you.[693.83][693.83][S01. Thank you.[696.83][696.83][S01. Thank you.[699.83][699.83][S01. Thank you.[702.83][702.83][S01. Thank you.[705.83][705.83][S01. Thank you.[708.83][708.83][S01. Thank you.[711.83][711.83][S01. Thank you.[714.83][714.83][S01. Thank you.[717.83][717.83][S01. Thank you.[720.83][720.83][S01. Thank you.[723.83][723.83][S01. Thank you.[726.83][726.83][S01. Thank you.[729.83][729.83][S01. Thank you.[732.83][732.83][S01. Thank you.[735.83][735.83][S01. Thank you.[738.83][738.83][S01. Thank you.[741.83][741.83][S01. Thank you.[744.83][744.83][S01. Thank you.[747.83][747.83][S01. Thank you.[750.83][750.83][S01. Thank you.[753.83][753.83][S01. Thank you.[756.83][756.83][S01. Thank you.[759.83][759.83][S01. Thank you.[762.83][762.83][S01. Thank you.[765.83][765.83][S01. Thank you.[768.83][768.83][S01. Thank you.[771.83][771.83][S01. Thank you.[774.83][774.83][S01. Thank you.[777.83][777.83][S01. Thank you.[780.83][780.83][S01. Thank you.[783.83][783.83][S01. Thank you.[786.83][786.83][S01. Thank you.[789.83][789.83][S01. Thank you.[792.83][792.83][S01. Thank you.[795.83][795.83][S01. Thank you.[798.83][798.83][S01. Thank you.[801.83][801.83][S01. Thank you.[804.83][804.83][S01. Thank you.[807.83][807.83][S01. Thank you.[810.83][810.83][S01. Thank you.[813.83][813.83][S01. Thank you.[816.83][816.83][S01. Thank you.[819.83][819.83][S01. Thank you.[822.83][822.83][S01. Thank you.[825.83][825.83][S01. Thank you.[828.83][828.83][S01. Thank you.[831.83][831.83][S01. Thank you.[834.83][834.83][S01. Thank you.[837.83][837.83][S01. Thank you.[840.83][840.83][S01. Thank you.[843.83][843.83][S01. Thank you.[846.83][846.83][S01. Thank you.[849.83][849.83][S01. Thank you.[852.83][852.83][S01. Thank you.[855.83][855.83][S01. Thank you.[858.83][858.83][S01. Thank you.[861.83][861.83][S01. Thank you.[864.83][864.83][S01. Thank you.[867.83][867.83][S01. Thank you.[870.83][870.83][S01. Thank you.[873.83][873.83][S01. Thank you.[876.83][876.83][S01. Thank you.[879.83][879.83][S01. Thank you.[882.83][882.83][S01. Thank you.[885.83][885.83][S01. Thank you.[888.83][888.83][S01. Thank you.[891.83][891.83][S01. Thank you.[894.83][894.83][S01. Thank you.[897.83][897.83][S01. Thank you.[900.83][900.83][S01. Thank you.[903.83][903.83][S01. Thank you.[906.83][906.83][S01. Thank you.[909.83][909.83][S01. Thank you.[912.83][912.83][S01. Thank you.[915.83][915.83][S01. Thank you.[918.83][918.83][S01. Thank you.[921.83][921.83][S01. Thank you.[924.83][924.83][S01. Thank you.[927.83][927.83][S01. Thank you.[930.83][930.83][S01. Thank you.[933.83][933.83][S01. Thank you.[936.83][936.83][S01. Thank you.[939.83][939.83][S01. Thank you.[942.83][942.83][S01. Thank you.[945.83][945.83][S01. Thank you.[948.83][948.83][S01. Thank you.[951.83][951.83][S01. Thank you.[954.83][954.83][S01. Thank you.[957.83][957.83][S01. Thank you.[960.83][960.83][S01. Thank you.[963.83][963.83][S01. Thank you.[966.83][966.83][S01. Thank you.[969.83][969.83][S01. Thank you.[972.83][972.83][S01. Thank you.[975.83][975.83][S01. Thank you.[978.83][978.83][S01. Thank you.[981.83][981.83][S01. Thank you.[984.83][984.83][S01. Thank you.[987.83][987.83][S01. Thank you.[990.83][990.83][S01. Thank you.[993.83][993.83][S01. Thank you.[996.83][996.83][S01. Thank you.[999.83][999.83][S01. Thank you.[1002.83][1002.83][S01. Thank you.[1005.83][1005.83][S01. Thank you.[1008.83][1008.83][S01. Thank you.[1011.83][1011.83][S01. Thank you.[1014.83][1014.83][S01. Thank you.[1017.83][1017.83][S01. Thank you.[1020.83][1020.83][S01. Thank you.[1023.83][1023.83][S01. Thank you.[1026.83][1026.83][S01. Thank you.[1029.83][1029.83][S01. Thank you.[1032.83][1032.83][S01. Thank you.[1035.83][1035.83][S01. Thank you.[1038.83][1038.83][S01. Thank you.[1041.83][1041.83][S01. Thank you.[1044.83][1044.83][S01. Thank you.[1047.83][1047.83][S01. Thank you.[1050.83][1050.83][S01. Thank you.[1053.83][1053.83][S01. Thank you.[1056.83][1056.83][S01. Thank you.[1059.83][1059.83][S01. Thank you.[1062.83][1062.83][S01. Thank you.[1065.83][1065.83][S01. Thank you.[1068.83][1068.83][S01. Thank you.[1071.83][1071.83][S01. Thank you.[1074.83][1074.83][S01. Thank you.[1077.83][1077.83][S01. Thank you.[1080.83][1080.83][S01. Thank you.[1083.83][1083.83][S01. Thank you.[1086.83][1086.83][S01. Thank you.[1089.83][1089.83][S01. Thank you.[1092.83][1092.83][S01. Thank you.[1095.83][1095.83][S01. Thank you.[1098.83][1098.83][S01. Thank you.[1101.83][1101.83][S01. Thank you.[1104.83][1104.83][S01. Thank you.[1107.83][1107.83][S01. Thank you.[1110.83][1110.83][S01. Thank you.[1113.83][1113.83][S01. Thank you.[1116.83][1116.83][S01. Thank you.[1119.83][1119.83][S01. Thank you.[1122.83][1122.83][S01. Thank you.[1125.83][1125.83][S01. Thank you.[1128.83][1128.83][S01. Thank you.[1131.83][1131.83][S01. Thank you.[1134.83][1134.83][S01. Thank you.[1137.83][1137.83][S01. Thank you.[1140.83][1140.83][S01. Thank you.[1143.83][1143.83][S01. Thank you.[1146.83][1146.83][S01. Thank you.[1149.83][1149.83][S01. Thank you.[1152.83][1152.83][S01. Thank you.[1155.83][1155.83][S01. Thank you.[1158.83][1158.83][S01. Thank you.[1161.83][1161.83][S01. Thank you.[1164.83][1164.83][S01. Thank you.[1167.83][1167.83][S01. Thank you.[1170.83][1170.83][S01. Thank you.[1173.83][1173.83][S01. Thank you.[1176.83][1176.83][S01. Thank you.[1179.83][1179.83][S01. Thank you.[1182.83][1182.83][S01. Thank you.[1185.83][1185.83][S01. Thank you.[1188.83][1188.83][S01. Thank you.[1191.83][1191.83][S01. Thank you.[1194.83][1194.83][S01. Thank you.[1197.83][1197.83][S01. Thank you.[1200.83][1200.83][S01. Thank you.[1203.83][1203.83][S01. Thank you.[1206.83][1206.83][S01. Thank you.[1209.83][1209.83][S01. Thank you.[1212.83][1212.83][S01. Thank you.[1215.83][1215.83][S01. Thank you.[1218.83][1218.83][S01. Thank you.[1221.83][1221.83][S01. Thank you.[1224.83][1224.83][S01. Thank you.[1227.83][1227.83][S01. Thank you.[1230.83][1230.83][S01. Thank you.[1233.83][1233.83][S01. Thank you.[1236.83][1236.83][S01. Thank you.[1239.83][1239.83][S01. Thank you.[1242.83][1242.83][S01. Thank you.[1245.83][1245.83][S01. Thank you.[1248.83][1248.83][S01. Thank you.[1251.83][1251.83][S01. Thank you.[1254.83][1254.83][S01. Thank you.[1257.83][1257.83][S01. Thank you.[1260.83][1260.83][S01. Thank you.[1263.83][1263.83][S01. Thank you.[1266.83][1266.83][S01. Thank you.[1269.83][1269.83][S01. Thank you.[1272.83][1272.83][S01. Thank you.[1275.83][1275.83][S01. Thank you.[1278.83][1278.83][S01. Thank you.[1281.83][1281.83][S01. Thank you.[1284.83][1284.83][S01. Thank you.[1287.83][1287.83][S01. Thank you.[1290.83][1290.83][S01. Thank you.[1293.83][1293.83][S01. Thank you.[1296.83][1296.83][S01. Thank you.[1299.83][1299.83][S01. Thank you.[1302.83][1302.83][S01. Thank you.[1305.83][1305.83][S01. Thank you.[1308.83][1308.83][S01. Thank you.[1311.83][1311.83][S01. Thank you.[1314.83][1314.83][S01. Thank you.[1317.83][1317.83][S01. Thank you.[1320.83][1320.83][S01. Thank you.[1323.83][1323.83][S01. Thank you.[1326.83][1326.83][S01. Thank you.[1329.83][1329.83][S01. Thank you.[1332.83][1332.83][S01. Thank you.[1335.83][1335.83][S01. Thank you.[1338.83][1338.83][S01. Thank you.[1341.83][1341.83][S01. Thank you.[1344.83][1344.83][S01. Thank you.[1347.83][1347.83][S01. Thank you.[1350.83][1350.83][S01. Thank you.[1353.83][1353.83][S01. Thank you.[1356.83][1356.83][S01. Thank you.[1359.83][1359.83][S01. Thank you.[1362.83][1362.83][S01. Thank you.[1365.83][1365.83][S01. Thank you.[1368.83][1368.83][S01. Thank you.[1371.83][1371.83][S01. Thank you.[1374.83][1374.83][S01. Thank you.[1377.83][1377.83][S01. Thank you.[1380.83][1380.83][S01. Thank you.[1383.83][1383.83][S01. Thank you.[1386.83][1386.83][S01. Thank you.[1389.83][1389.83][S01. Thank you.[1392.83][1392.83][S01. Thank you.[1395.83][1395.83][S01. Thank you.[1398.83][1398.83][S01. Thank you.[1401.83][1401.83][S01. Thank you.[1404.83][1404.83][S01. Thank you.[1407.83][1407.83][S01. Thank you.[1410.83][1410.83][S01. Thank you.[1413.83][1413.83][S01. Thank you.[1416.83][1416.83][S01. Thank you.[1419.83][1419.83][S01. Thank you.[1422.83][1422.83][S01. Thank you.[1425.83][1425.83][S01. Thank you.[1428.83][1428.83][S01. Thank you.[1431.83][1431.83][S01. Thank you.[1434.83][1434.83][S01. Thank you.[1437.83][1437.83][S01. Thank you.[1440.83][1440.83][S01. Thank you.[1443.83][1443.83][S01. Thank you.[1446.83][1446.83][S01. Thank you.[1449.83][1449.83][S01. Thank you.[1452.83][1452.83][S01. Thank you.[1455.83][1455.83][S01. Thank you.[1458.83][1458.83][S01. Thank you.[1461.83][1461.83][S01. Thank you.[1464.83][1464.83][S01. Thank you.[1467.83][1467.83][S01. Thank you.[1470.83][1470.83][S01. Thank you.[1473.83][1473.83][S01. Thank you.[1476.83][1476.83][S01. Thank you.[1479.83][1479.83][S01. Thank you.[1482.83][1482.83][S01. Thank you.[1485.83][1485.83][S01. Thank you.[1488.83][1488.83][S01. Thank you.[1491.83][1491.83][S01. Thank you.[1494.83][1494.83][S01. Thank you.[1497.83][1497.83][S01. Thank you.[1500.83][1500.83][S01. Thank you.[1503.83][1503.83][S01. Thank you.[1506.83][1506.83][S01. Thank you.[1509.83][1509.83][S01. Thank you.[1512.83][1512.83][S01. Thank you.[1515.83][1515.83][S01. Thank you.[1518.83][1518.83][S01. Thank you.[1521.83][1521.83][S01. Thank you.[1524.83][1524.83][S01. Thank you.[1527.83][1527.83][S01. Thank you.[1530.83][1530.83][S01. Thank you.[1533.83][1533.83][S01. Thank you.[1536.83][1536.83][S01. Thank you.[1539.83][1539.83][S01. Thank you.[1542.83][1542.83][S01. Thank you.[1545.83][1545.83][S01. Thank you.[1548.83][1548.83][S01. Thank you.[1551.83][1551.83][S01. Thank you.[1554.83][1554.83][S01. Thank you.[1557.83][1557.83][S01. Thank you.[1560.83][1560.83][S01. Thank you.[1563.83][1563.83][S01. Thank you.[1566.83][1566.83][S01. Thank you.[1569.83][1569.83][S01. Thank you.[1572.83][1572.83][S01. Thank you.[1575.83][1575.83][S01. Thank you.[1578.83][1578.83][S01. Thank you.[1581.83][1581.83][S01. Thank you.[1584.83][1584.83][S01. Thank you.[1587.83][1587.83][S01. Thank you.[1590.83][1590.83][S01. Thank you.[1593.83][1593.83][S01. Thank you.[1596.83][1596.83][S01. Thank you.[1599.83][1599.83][S01. Thank you.[1602.83][1602.83][S01. Thank you.[1605.83][1605.83][S01. Thank you.[1608.83][1608.83][S01. Thank you.[1611.83][1611.83][S01. Thank you.[1614.83][1614.83][S01. Thank you.[1617.83][1617.83][S01. Thank you.[1620.83][1620.83][S01. Thank you.[1623.83][1623.83][S01. Thank you.[1626.83][1626.83][S01. Thank you.[1629.83][1629.83][S01. Thank you.[1632.83][1632.83][S01. Thank you.[1635.83][1635.83][S01. Thank you.[1638.83][1638.83][S01. Thank you.[1641.83][1641.83][S01. Thank you.[1644.83][1644.83][S01. Thank you.[1647.83][1647.83][S01. Thank you.[1650.83][1650.83][S01. Thank you.[1653.83][1653.83][S01. Thank you.[1656.83][1656.83][S01. Thank you.[1659.83][1659.83][S01. Thank you.[1662.83][1662.83][S01. Thank you.[1665.83][1665.83][S01. Thank you.[1668.83][1668.83][S01. Thank you.[1671.83][1671.83][S01. Thank you.[1674.83][1674.83][S01. Thank you.[1677.83][1677.83][S01. Thank you.[1680.83][1680.83][S01. Thank you.[1683.83][1683.83][S01. Thank you.[1686.83][1686.83][S01. Thank you.[1689.83][1689.83][S01. Thank you.[1692.83][1692.83][S01. Thank you.[1695.83][1695.83][S01. Thank you.[1698.83][1698.83][S01. Thank you.[1701.83][1701.83][S01. Thank you.[1704.83][1704.83][S01. Thank you.[1707.83][1707.83][S01. Thank you.[1710.83][1710.83][S01. Thank you.[1713.83][1713.83][S01. Thank you.[1716.83][1716.83][S01. Thank you.[1719.83][1719.83][S01. Thank you.[1722.83][1722.83][S01. Thank you.[1725.83][1725.83][S01. Thank you.[1728.83][1728.83][S01. Thank you.[1731.83][1731.83][S01. Thank you.[1734.83][1734.83][S01. Thank you.[1737.83][1737.83][S01. Thank you.[1740.83][1740.83][S01. Thank you.[1743.83][1743.83][S01. Thank you.[1746.83][1746.83][S01. Thank you.[1749.83][1749.83][S01. Thank you.[1752.83][1752.83][S01. Thank you.[1755.83][1755.83][S01. Thank you.[1758.83][1758.83][S01. Thank you.[1761.83][1761.83][S01. Thank you.[1764.83][1764.83][S01. Thank you.[1767.83][1767.83][S01. Thank you.[1770.83][1770.83][S01. Thank you.[1773.83][1773.83][S01. Thank you.[1776.83][1776.83][S01. Thank you.[1779.83][1779.83][S01. Thank you.[1782.83][1782.83][S01. Thank you.[1785.83][1785.83][S01. Thank you.[1788.83][1788.83][S01. Thank you.[1791.83][1791.83][S01. Thank you.